I think the call is meeting to order. Planning Commission meeting for Monday, August 21st. The recording the attendance, Chris Norrie is in absence tonight. And I'm taking over as chair and the other members are in attendance. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the by the United States of America. In whose we come up with our stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and general.
Have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move support.
She is supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Article four, is there any conflict of interest?
No.
None noted. Article five, can I have a motion to prove the minutes of the August 7th, 2023 meeting?
I found a few errors.
Okay.
Please share.
Bruno?
Glenn Turick, I believe, is a resident at 7199, mooring, M O O R, as opposed to morning. More and same paragraph, last sentence, Turk further stated that keeping the 12 units, I think there's an extra P missing in some of the capping. Um, and then on page four, I believe it's Mike Kasmaskus, K A S M A U S K. So the first vowel should be an A. And then on page, he's referenced somewhere later in these minutes. Page eight should reflect the same spelling that I just denoted on page four. Then on top of page seven, it says, member Bruno sought more precise documentation regarding communication exchanges. Can we make that more specific? Member Bruno sought the legal counsel's letters. Um, I think those need to be shared with us so that we are empowered and know what we're talking about. So that's too much of an abstraction there. And then I think finally, the last one on page seven, after motion carried eight to zero, it talks about Ms. Abdu and says that she disagrees at the with the airport's authority. And then the next sentence says, there does, there does need to be a more defined definition of aeronautic use. I thought she specifically stated that we used the definition of aeronautics from the FAA. So, so that sounded like she wasn't overly certain about the definition, and I thought she was much more certain. So I'm going to go back to the, the recording of that, but I think that sentence is incorrect. That's it for me.
Are we allowed to edit things that it says we said? I don't remember what I said, but.
Sure.
Uh, page five says a it reads that I said, I empathize with the need of luxury apartments, especially for young adults. Can I just delete that? Especially for young adults. If I said it, I didn't mean it specifically for a certain age group. I like it.
We really can't change the record. If it's in there, then it's, it's in there.
We can review if it's.
It's not a huge deal.
It may have been incorrectly written here though. So if you have a concern, they could.
We probably would have said for professionals rather than young adults.
We can double check that and, and correct it if it's different.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other changes?
No.
Any other changes? Okay. And I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve with changes as noted.
Can I have a second?
Support.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hey, we now like to acknowledge our visitors and those wishing to speak. Uh, but those are comments or those comments are limited to five minutes per speaker and they are for any issues that are not on the agenda tonight. No comments? Anybody on the line? Okay. Moving on to article seven, case number 23 dash 3785. Or 8189 Ashwood Drive. Madison.
Hello. We have um, a doc cam that's not working this evening, so refer to your packets for uh, building plans. The applicants before us today have been to planning commission in the past. They were not able to start construction within that one year timeframe. So they're back here with us to seek approval. Again, for the same plans, uh, this is an accessory building that totals to 1,260 square feet. So because it exceeds that eight thirty-two, they do require a special use permit from the township. Um, the covered patio is 14 by 30 and the actual building for storage that's fully enclosed is 18 by 40. So again, that totals to 1,260 square feet. Um, the building height to the midpoint of the roof was 14 is 14 feet. Um, and the required setbacks are a 10 foot setback to the side property line, 25 feet to the rear property line. Um, and the applicant does show that they are meeting both of these standards uh, with a 40 foot side property setback and a 75 foot rear property line setback. Um, they have less than three acres. Um, correction to my staff report, it should say 1.9 acres is the parcel size. Um, uh, it's listed as point five acres. So just an edit error for you all. Um, but because they have less than three acres, they are just permitted the one accessory building. Um, and the size that they're requesting is considered standard or normal for our zoning district in the ARC. Uh, they are part of a PUD, but we'll generalize them to that same district. Uh, I can refer to the accessory building inventory if needed. The factors of finding previously and again, were that the buildings in the neighborhood, um, or homes in the neighborhood do have detached buildings. Um, that there wouldn't be an impact on neighboring properties and that the use of the building is for personal storage and for a pool house. So the applicant is aware it cannot be used uh, for a home or work accessory building cannot be used for those. And that is the general summary with those, I would recommend that it be approved again by the planning commission, but if there's any questions, they can take them.
Do any members have questions for Madison? I'm Richardson.
You can go first.
Well, I was just gonna answer, this is exactly the same request as in May of 2022, am I wrong?
Correct. The standards.
Changed the building in any way.
The building plans did not change except for the, a slight increase in the covered patio height, but it doesn't affect the overall approval standards.
Okay. And then just a an opinion thrown out there. When a case comes back in front of us, I think it would be beneficial for staff to include the minutes of the prior approval in the package.
Noted.
Thank you.
Um, do we know if it's typical to let the year go by without um, advancing on the project or maybe what the reason was that it didn't happen?
The applicant didn't specify exactly why, just that they were delayed in getting started.
And then I had one other quick question. It says that fewer than three acres, you can only have one accessory building. They currently have zero, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Brian?
Kind of in Scott's vein, is it possible also to like to address like the deltas? So if you're going to throw the meeting minutes in there and say, what's changed, right?
So like point out specific changes from the previous would be helpful.
I think that'd be helpful.
Okay.
Um, and then finally, this is, um, no one likes to say that, I guess. So I can't say I'm a newbie. But correct me if I'm wrong. So this, so this applicant is in front of us because they're exceeding eight thirty-two.
Yeah.
Technically, they're at eight thirty-five, correct? Because we only count finished square footage. So the covered patio doesn't technically.
No, the covered patio does uh, count if the posts are on the outside of it. If it's a complete overhang, we don't include that because we don't include overhangs. But anything within the.
That's how we define building and habitable space.
Okay. So say, because the post are what?
Anything inside the posts are part of the building.
Part of, okay.
Cause the roof is supported, yeah.
Thank you.
And in the future, they could enclose it too.
That's true.
Going post, post.
That's true. So it's already, it's already included as part of the building. Now, if it was all, can't leave it out there, it was overhang. They had something like 12 foot overhang. They've, they've found a loophole.
Any other questions for Madison? Okay, thank you. Would the owner's representative like to come up? Give us your name and your address.
Sure. I'm Rachel Cluse. My address is 8189 Ashwood Drive, Southeast Ada, Michigan.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, do members have questions for Rachel?
Why the delay?
Why the delay? We ended up having to take care of our mother-in-law. So had to delay a little bit and we're hoping this fall, so.
Okay. I'd just like to say the plans are beautiful.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And they were approved by the homeowner's association as well, too. I don't know if that matters, but.
Okay. Who was your architect?
Um, we had Jeff from WLP. Jeff, I'm going to draw a blank on his name. Sorry. I should know his name, but it's probably on the plans. Yes.
Okay. All right. Uh, thank you very much.
Yep.
Would like to now open it for.
Make a motion for public hearing.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody who would like to make comments or ask questions or come up to talk about it? Anybody online?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support. Motion supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do more board members have any questions for Madison or for the owner?
Hearing none, I would make a motion as I did in May of 2022 for case number 23 dash 3785 to approve the special use permit for an accessory building exceeding 832 square feet.
3785 or 8785? Eight seven eight five is written on.
Three, seven, eight, five is what my agenda says.
Says at the top of the application, it says eight, seven, eight, five. I just want to make sure.
Oh, yeah, I do see that. We have conflicting numbers. How about we just say for the property, 8189 Ashwood?
Three, seven, eight, five is correct.
And uh, that would be with the conditions that all outdoor lighting adheres to the township ordinance and that the accessory building cannot be used as a dwelling or to operate a business.
I will support the motion. Motion's made and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? Want to oppose? Okay. Uh, then it's six to one. Okay. Uh, moving on, article eight. Master plan amendments.
I mean, you can stay if you want. It's pretty exciting stuff.
Oh, yes.
There's something in here that I had a concern about and I don't see it now.
I don't think I need to. So yeah, Danielle Bouchard is with McKenna. So we remember, I think it's just about a month ago that we approved the contract to work on updating the master plan. Yeah. Um, so Michelle and her team and with along with Chris Corey have been working on that and started with kind of that review of the current plan. And then their memo was included in your packet. So Danielle's here to speak to that and I'm.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. I guess I, I didn't require an introduction. I was just wondering if you wanted to say anything. Um, well, it's nice to see you guys. Um, I recognize some familiar faces from the strategic plan process. Um, just a quick intro for myself. My name is Danielle Bouchard. If you guys, um, don't recall this meeting in the past. Um, I'm with the McKenna team. We've been working with the township for a couple of years now. Um, first on the strategic plan that we did a whole bunch of public engagement for, took about a year or so to wrap up. Um, now we're working with the township, um, DDA on a couple of implementation things that are exciting in the works, um, for that group. Um, and then we've also been working with, um, the township implementation committee as part of the strategic plan, um, implementation process. Um, so what I have for you tonight is basically, I don't, unless you guys want me to, I don't really plan to go line by line on our first diagnostic review of the master plan, but just kind of give you guys highlights on the major key themes that we found. Um, and then kind of go over like what the scope expectations are, um, milestones for this project, scheduling for this project, and then kind of um, I'm hoping that this will be kind of an organic discussion that you guys let me know if there's something in this diagnostic review that perhaps you were hoping to see that isn't there or anything that you think might be inaccurate that you would like to talk more through. Um, so this diagnostic review just kind of points out key things of the master plan that we found that are either contradictory to the strategic planning process or contradictory to other items that, um, have evolved since, uh, the master plan was done in 2019. Um, so jumping over to the scope or proposal, um, that was approved, um, back in June. Um, so the first task that was approved through this master plan update or amendment process um, was a master plan content review. So essentially, as I mentioned, the key idea here is that we wanted to go through the master plan line by line and point out the things and pick out the things that are needed for further discussion or rework material and so forth. Um, so the, the deliverable of task one is that memorandum that you see before you this evening. Um, so jumping to highlights of that memo, um, it should be noted, um, that it, the memo does not go over every single theme and action that's in the current plan, but just the ones that we pointed out that are noteworthy for further discussion through this process or may not be relevant to the township anymore through the strategic planning process. So um, our major or overarching, um, recommendation that we pointed out thus far was a little bit of a reorg, um, in the overarching theme. So the way that your master plan for 2019 is, um, divided out is you have your, your four major themes and then there are, um, actions that go along with that. Um, and the way that it's line, uh, discussed is in the table. So it has your project and then your action, and then I have a status and then a recommendation from there. So because the, um, there was a lot of public engagement that occurred with the strategic plan process. Um, we are proposing to kind of rework these overarching themes a little bit to be more concise with what we heard from the community. Um, so just a quick update for you guys on, on what those numbers look like. Um, we heard from about a little over 2,000 residents during the, the strategic planning process. Um, which equates to, if I am, I don't want to say it wrong actually. So I was going to say the percentage of the population, but uh, I might be speaking out of turn there. So over 2,000.
Round it to plus or minus five percent like.
Uh, actually, you know what? I might be able to pull it up.
10%. Yeah, I think it's right around 10.
Was it? Okay. I couldn't remember because I think we pulled out 18 plus. So I was thinking there are around like 17 to 23,000 residents and plus or minus, but I think that the, um, connecting cascade.com does have, it's still live and it does have, uh, the metrics of what we heard from the community through that process. Um, so the current, uh, themes that you guys have, um, include neighborhoods and partnerships, sustainability and environment, economy and innovation, and transportation and mobility. So when we did the, uh, the public engagement push through the strategic plan process, that consisted of an online survey, a paper survey that went out to all residents, um, several focus groups and, uh, follow-ups from that point. Um, and we also had stakeholder meetings and, uh, public meetings and so forth. Um, so what we are suggesting is a little bit of a rework to more closely align with the strategic plan uh, themes and outcomes that came through that big public engagement push. So your current themes are already pretty close to what we were recommending. Um, but just kind of more of a, a little bit of a rework there to kind of narrow it down on what those goals are going to be. Um, so the first we included is downtown village. So that closely relates to your economy and innovation, um, goal that you already have. Um, but we're kind of trying to, to narrow it down and drill it down to what we heard from the community because we've already done the, the public engagement, like big legwork piece of this project. Um, so the downtown village, um, that I should note also was consistently across the board, what we heard from the community as the community's highest priority for the township. Um, so the DDA has already been working at bright lengths to, um, uh, implement or start the beginning processes of implementation to get this downtown village atmosphere. Um, township board has been involved and so forth. Um, and then of course you folks will be involved through this process and then, you know, subsequent zoning ordinance amendments and, you know, whatever arises from this. Um, growth management and preservation is the second um, goal that we are proposing. So this closely relates to sustainability and environment. Um, but this growth management and preservation is going to be a little bit geared more towards smart growth and, uh, farmland preservation and rural area preservation. Um, this will kind of, this will touch on, um, utility boundary. Uh, areas that are currently noted in the future land use map, discussing those further and, and what makes the most sense for those growth areas. So rather than just having like a blanket of sustainability and environment, we kind of want to narrow it down a little bit more toward where do we want to, um, pursue growth, um, and development and, and density for lack of a better term. And where do we want to make sure that we're not, uh, encroaching on any important farmland areas, any rural residential areas and, and so forth. Um, and that will also speak to farmland preservation goals and, and all those, um, types of uh, aspects. Uh, parks and trails, this is a new goal that we are proposing. Um, again, this was something that we heard consistently from the community as something that's very important to them, something that they want to focus on, that's something that they want the township to focus in on more. Um, so having a little bit more, uh, teeth to the parks and trails and how that relates to the work that the parks committee is doing, that the pathways committee is doing, the new, um, parks plan that was just put out or adopted not that long ago and how all these pieces kind of work together. Um, and then lastly, we are recommending a goal related to, um, roads and streets rather than transportation and mobility. So this is a little bit different in the way that, um, as you guys likely know, in light of the DDA's decision to not renew the contract with the rapid, we want to more so focus on roads and streets and how we can, um, continue, uh, collaborative partnerships with, um, road entities and so forth. And kind of focus more so on, on improving and enhancing the infrastructure we already have while knowing that the DDA is working on, um, these, the new transportation, uh, public transportation alternative, um, in light of the, uh, Rapids termination of that contract. Um, so that's any questions on, on those changes before I move forward or any pushback? Yeah.
You defined the boundaries of the village?
So the, yes. So through the strategic planning process, um, there were two areas, which I believe your master plan kind of goes into a little bit of detail as well, but there are two areas that kind of, uh, sprung up as what would be considered the village area. So there would be the upper village area. That's here where Friendship Park is going in and the library improvements and so forth. And then there's the low edge of it, lower village area that includes like the Cascade Road and 28th Street intersection. Um, the area behind there where Fowling is or Folling, um, Dollar Tree, which we've kind of dubbed as Thorn Apple Plaza, but I didn't want to say that without giving you context on what that was. So, yeah.
Are, are we able to just arbitrarily change the village boundaries like that? Just say this is where we think it is, or I mean, isn't it what it's always been?
So you're, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I'm just, I, I, I'm just asking if, you know, I mean, I, I would assume there's some maps and things though, if we're going to have upper village and a lower village. I mean, we've always had, you know, I think the, the problem is that we had a village like Ada, right? And over time, the city grew and has now kind of swallowed our village. And so it's very difficult to get that, that village feel back once you're up against. Um, so I, I guess that's why I'm asking is I, it sounds like we want to expand it, which is, you know, that's okay. I just, isn't there a kind of like a, I would assume the border has to take up some process to do that?
So that will be part of the future land use planning.
Okay.
I asked a simple question. Have you defined the boundaries of the village?
There is a map in the strategic plan, but it's more of a bubble map, kind of that shows general areas. But that's going to be part of this discussion of when we go through the future land use plan and zone and subsequent zoning recommendations. Um, and Brian's done some great work and put in re-energizing the architectural review board. So all of these groups are kind of working in tandem with one another. Um, so that will be a discussion that we have through this process. The DDA has already done some work on like what they define as like the parcels that are involved and not involved. But ultimately, a lot of that comes down to zoning and, and what is your zoning district that allows you to do A, B, C, and D? And then are your architectural standards that are going to be supplementary on top of that?
We used to have signs, which I'm assuming the DDA paid for that told you when you were entering and exiting the the village, but I think those are long since gone. Uh, my, I guess my question was related to, I think it was theme number two, um, talks about utilities. I'd really like to see the township expand sewer to residence. It seems like that gets discussed a lot, but we reconstruct these roads and we don't extend it. I, like right now, they're redoing Tanglewood. They're putting the water in, but they're not putting sewer down there. Almost everybody on that street has been whining that they have failing septic. Well, yeah, the whole community is hilly. You gotta put pump stations in, but it just seems to me that we're, there's always a reason why we're not expanding. I live on Cascade Road and they reconstructed a whole section of road and they never put the forest main under the road. We got elementary schools that are on septic system still. It just seems like we should be, we should be working towards, um, expanding that.
That's great. Thank you.
I'm just
she said questions on these.
So.
Well, this is important. I think this will be important for the process.
So I'm this is my first engagement with this.
Oh, welcome.
No disclaimers are allowed anymore.
No, I was careful how I wrote that. I, I definitely think it goes back to the map. Um, I read through this like Thorn Apple Plaza. I actually Googled it. There is a Thorn Apple Plaza in Hastings. Uh, I didn't know what Thorn Apple Plaza was.
It's been unofficially dubbed.
I, I, I took my best guess, Upper Village. I kind of was able to infer from come some of the descriptors, Lower Village. But I am at a loss of, and, and I don't really know what the old village was. But my question is.
It's on the map. It's the village of Cascade. Nevermind.
I've never seen it on a map. I gotta be honest. Um, my question though is if you had solicited me before I reading any of this, where is Cascade Village? Not Cascade Township. I would have thought the area down by the river that we're trying to expand. And yet I look at the shading on the map and it's not pink. It's not part of the village. So I'm, I'm kind of confused. Shouldn't there be a river village or something? We have lower, we have upper and we have uh, a plaza, but where I thought the village was, has nothing to do with any of this planning. Am I alone?
Back to my simple question.
Okay.
I think to make a general comment, I feel like, you know, a hundred years ago, people thought the village was where Cascade and Thorn Apple met. And maybe where Cascade and 28th met, just from Thorn Apple to 28th on Cascade. But we don't have, we're not one of those places where we have like an actual legal entity that is an actual village as opposed to a city or a township. Um, we have kind of an idea of what we think the village feels like based on our zoning and what we, you know, maybe there once was a village. I don't think we legally have a village anymore. It's just a, an idea of like an, an area that we call a village, but it's not a legal village.
That's a great question. I, I would infer the same, but based on what Scott just said a few minutes ago, I'm questioning, do we have a legal entity known as a village? Cause you asked, can we change it?
That was my question. I thought we did just because I know it used, the village boundary used to be like, I want to say maybe around I had to guess it was either on Burton or Wendell. I'm not aware of us having any type of actual legal formal village. It is more to Rob's point, just that kind of concept of where do you think it is? We, where is it? So.
Well, the signs used, like signs used to be, I think, like Burton and Cascade and then at the river and then it went up the hill to, uh, we're all 28th and 28th come together.
I, I agree.
There was no legal entity of it?
I agree with you that there was.
But if you look at old, old vintage maps, that's the area that's.
It might be on the map, but like Jonathan is on a map too, but it's not real. You know, I think it was just like a, the idea of it and it never actually took root the way the village of Ada legally actually is surrounded by the township of Ada.
I don't know. That's why I was asking the question, I guess.
It's a good question and I agree.
I mean, I think through, unless there is some sort of like magic donor that comes in that says, here's $10 billion to do what you want to do with it. unless there is some sort of like magic donor that comes in that says, here's $10 billion to do what you want to do with it, like kind of the opportunity that Ada had in some ways. But I don't, at least from what we heard from the community. I think that like using the, the, the government or municipal term village may not be, it's entirely applicable in this scenario unless it's something like that happens where there's a movement to incorporate something. But if you're thinking of it more as a, the idea of the walkable urban-esque type of environment with that cottagey type of architecture. That's sort of what I mean when I say village.
I feel like because we're, we all are confused about this a little bit, maybe when we make these documents, we should use a different term, like downtown area or something rather than, because a village does have a legal definition and that's not what we have, I don't think.
Okay. I mean, yeah, I, I don't see a problem with that. I just will ask for your grace in the meantime, because that's the term that we've been using. And, and all the other, you know, boards and commissions have been utilizing that term as well. But yeah, it's, it's more of just, just as a descriptor of the atmosphere rather than we are trying to incorporate official village within the township. Perhaps maybe one day that might happen, but I don't think that that's necessarily the goal at this point. Or at least it hasn't been talked about to my knowledge.
And they have used that term for a while. It's like the 2019 plan refers to village areas, but again, it's in the informal sense of just designating areas that they're being focused on. So that term's been around for a while, but right now in actually, in a legal sense.
So maybe I could try to, so I, I guess I have less concern over the use of the word as long as we draw it on a map, like. Again, I didn't, I feel bad. I didn't participate in any of the surveys and that. So I don't know if, if on any of the documentation it showed a boundary. But when people say that the village concept is important to them and we don't know what area they're talking about. If everybody's talking about something different, then how do we know we're all talking the same thing?
So through our discussions through the strategic plan process, like I mentioned, it was sussed out that there would be the upper village and the lower village, the upper village being of which this area that's already been improvements already well underway there and we, you know, we aren't really involved in that process as, from my standpoint as McKenna. Through the lower village process, we've identified different areas of which we would like to narrow in focus, and this is strictly speaking with my work with the DDA. That we would like to focus public-private partnerships in order to implement this walkable, bikeable, shopping, retail, mixed-use type of atmosphere. The first, the first of which is that Thornapple Plaza, as I mentioned, and that the DDA has been working on an overall vision for that. And what makes the most sense? We've engaged with, in conversations with property owners and so things are kind of moving on that aspect. The other piece of that is Old 28th Street. So Old 28th Street has a very excellent walkable and bikeable and future urbanist type of fabric to it because it has the street trees, it has narrower lanes, it has less traffic. It has sidewalks, it has all of the infrastructure that can make it a more enhanced walkable and bikeable area. So those are kind of the two pieces of which, of which I'm referring to when I say the lower village. And the third piece of that is how do we connect all of these together? Especially with the bridge improvements that are happening over the river and with the improvements at Tassel Park that are going on and all of those different types of pieces that are all, you know, working together. So I think, you know, all in all, through this process, that will be something that will be discussed at further. To talk about future lane uses for those particular parcels, what that might look like and how all of these pieces work together with what the DDA is doing and what we heard from the community. Does that help kind of maybe narrow it down a little bit?
A little bit.
Yeah. And, and when we get to the nitty gritty mapping piece of this, it'll be a parcel by parcel. This is the desired zoning. This is the, these are the desired zoning recommendations that will come out of, you know, any future rezoning opportunities and so forth. Any other questions before I move forward? Um, so general recommendations for the master plan. So the way that the plan is organized now admittedly was a bit confusing to me. I haven't seen one like it. Not to say that it's bad, but it is to say that through our town, our conversations with township staff and leadership as well as Mr. Nordike, that we kind of went through a little bit of what the goals are, like just for the overarching organization piece of the master plan. So the first of which I would like to organize a just strictly goals and objectives section of the master plan. So the way that the master plan is now, it has those four overarching themes and then it has projects and actions that are associated with it. So those are more, more suited, in my opinion, and recommendation would be to move those into an implementation plan that has direct priorities associated with it, has responsible entities associated with it and so forth. And then have a section that's strictly based on just goals and objectives. So you have your overarching goals and then your objectives that go along with it. So it'll be more high level, more visionary and they'll kind of relate a bit better to having the themes, the projects and the actions that go with it. It was also discussed to between ourselves and township leadership and Mr. Nordike that a hard copy would be desirable to have through this process. So actually having something that you can print out, markup, flip through when you have different rezoning proposals that come in or different site plans that come in and so forth. So that's something that we discuss through this process as well as, as having an actual document that people can use.
Didn't we get that a while back? We got a big packet that he handed out, told us to go through a markup and then we never did anything with it?
We have the strategic plan, it can be printed out, but the master plan is only web-based. So we sent a link to it. But right, there isn't a PDF to print out of the master plan right now.
Okay.
So we don't, we have our graphics department that will likely be involved in this process of designing a hard copy PDF document. But that's something that will probably have, that'll come later through the process. So essentially what will happen is that we'll just do a copy paste more or less of what you have online. Put it into document format, edit that, and then that will become the new updated plan, so to speak. And then, you know, we can, we'll work with township staff on what that means for the online version and all of that too. Which I believe you guys have editing rights, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But. So, man. Again, I might be missing something, but is there a way to get at least a preliminary map site? I tried to be thorough. I read all of this, I believe, and then I went back to the previous website, which is what Cascade Vision, I think. Cascade Township Vision. It has a map and it's easier to kind of understand when like it shows that Tassel Park will eventually be kind of equal sized on both side of Cascade Road. By seeing stuff like that, it's easier to visualize kind of what you're talking about is, is, do you have a rendering of at least kind of how you're envisioning this kind of village looking? Or is it all just textual at this point?
Is that in the strategic plan? Did it get that far along or?
Um, I'm turning, so we have connectingcascade.com that has the strategic plan on there. I'm looking, so Cascade Township Vision is
I think it's the same thing that was happening as I understand it. I could be completely wrong. I believe there was a 2019 effort and now there's a 2022 effort. I think this is the 2019 effort.
Right. So that is our current master plan is Cascade Vision.
Correct.
Okay. So that is the current master plan. So when you're saying cutting and pasting, you'll cut that and make edits.
So, okay, so what I, how I, I suppose I'm, I was speaking logistics, but how I envisioned this happening in my head to make, to translate this document to a hard copy document is to copy what text for text, word for word into like a Word document, edit from there. And then we'll talk through this process of, of what those edits will be. Like that's the amendment process that we'll work with you guys on. Does that make sense?
As you're drafting that, can we try to have our master plan and future land use plan and zoning ordinance all align with the same terms for the uses? Example would be, you know, industrial, could be industrial. You know, residential, because like right now, we, we have terms in the future land use plan that are diff, worded, that it's titled differently than what it is in the actual zoning ordinance. And that creates, seems to create some confusion sometimes having different titles for areas. It'd be nice to just say, you know, we want this to be, you know, residential instead of saying single family homes or, you know, have them, have them aligned so that I think one might say mixed use instead of say commercial or, I think you understand what I'm trying to say. Just I, I'd like, I think that whatever we come up with as a, as a future land use plan should should be reflective of what our zoning offers.
So that's a great segue to my next point is your current master plan does not have a zoning plan in it. And the zoning plan is exactly what you're saying is it directs or, yes, it directs your future land use categories and your zoning categories exactly with one another. So that way you can see that, okay, our zoning categories are A, B, C. But that, that correlates to future land use category A. So it'll say, for example, residential existing density. That translates to single family, two family, three family residential, R1, two and three, you know, whatever the categories end up being. So that was something that was pointed out through my review process was that your current master plan is, is lacking in that way that translates. How do you get from A to B and how are these two maps related to one another?
I think it would really help to have that.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's required by state law as well. So just as a note there.
Do you know when that law went into effect?
It's not to say that anyone did a wrong or, or, you know, not adequate job. I was just pointing out that that was something unusual. So the zoning plan, in addition to the minimum state requirement as relating your future land use categories and your, and your zoning districts to one another. We plan to take that a step further and go through your entire zoning ordinance along with township staff to point out areas that we find to be inconsistent with the goals of the master plan. So in general, this may look like residential district recommendations. Oftentimes those relate to, I don't know, lot size requirements and building requirements and I don't know, admin processes, things like that. We'll have commercial district recommendations, village district or overlay district recommendations and so forth. So that's something to note too. Through our conversations with staff and Mr. Nordug, we also kind of pulled out a couple other bullet points here that will likely be a part of this discussion. First of which is analysis of lot size requirements, floor area requirements, minimum unit size requirements, all of those types of things. Potential density bonuses for building within perhaps an area where the township is trying to allocate more density and, and prevent density from occurring in other areas that are less appropriate. Any farmland preservation policies or programs that may be implementable. Specific recommendations related to the village area, i.e. an exact boundary. Any consolidation or simplification to existing districts. So I see in many communities, not to say that Cascade is one of them, but as an example of this, I see in many communities where you have an R1 and R2 district that are virtually the same thing. And they don't really have any differences other than maybe a two-family dwelling is allowed by special land use or something like that. So oftentimes we'll, we'll look at each district and the uses in those districts and make recommendations based on if there's any simplification or consolidation that can be appropriate. That's not to say that there will be, but just something to note that we'll be looking for those things. And then descriptions of new or any new districts and what those descriptions should entail. So that will be more of a deeper dive and more more details put into your current future land use descriptions. And then taking that even a step further and we'll go parcel by parcel throughout the township to figure out what this future land use category makes sense for each district. And then we'll be working with township staff on that and as well as you guys. Applicable actions, as I mentioned, so those action items that are in the current master plan. I see those kind of shifting more towards an implementation plan. And so it'll have a big matrix that you can look at to quickly see, here's our goal, here's the action that relates to that goal. Here is the steps on how to get this goal done. Here's the timeframe priority wise. Here's potential cost estimates, very vague, probably one, two, three, four dollar signs. And then responsible entities. So whether if that be you folks, whether if that be the DDA or township board, which township board is involved in all all the ongoings in the township, but you get what I'm saying. So if it's a little, if it's more policy based, maybe that would be the board that would implement that type of action and so forth. So as part of our recommendation to include a parks and trails goal, we'll be developing content based on that, provided that you guys are supportive of that idea or recommendation. A lot of those discussions already happened during the strategic plan process. So we'll start with those as a baseline and then we'll continue to evolve as, as you guys get drafts and, and we work through this process together. So that's not to say that I'm telling you this work is already done, so deal with it. It's more of, we have a baseline to work from because we heard from so many people in the community. And now we can start to add, subtract and rework things as, as appropriate. Word document designed by our folks, our professionals to make it consistent with the strategic plan document, all the, all the documents will work in tandem with one another. And then reviewing pertinent demographic information to perhaps there, you know, because of the 2020 census data being released, there might be some changes there that we'll want to update for demographics that are already in the master plan. I don't see that being a huge overhaul of what you guys currently have, but you know, it's just good to have, since you're already doing this process, that's good to just update to make everything, make sure everything's current and complete. So now moving down, this table that I included in this memo has, goes through each of the themes and then I went through every action and project in every one of the themes and and making a recommendation based on what I found. So just kind of putting up an example of this. So the theme number one neighborhoods and partnerships. For housing and affordability. The action is permit attached residential infill. Including retirement housing near transit stops and so forth. And then so the recommendation there would be to rework this goal or action, or rework this action. Text here to specify the action to reflect the overall vision of the Cascade Village area. This might reflect the future land use map and revised designation. So, you know, just semantics pretty much here is that we just kind of picked out things that we noted that might not be as relevant anymore to what we heard from the community or stuff that's already being worked on. And then kind of going from there to make sure that everything's current and complete and up to date. And even for example, a permanent AV system to advertise and record public meetings. That's already been done. You guys have been doing that for a while now. So we can remove that action, stuff like that. And then so this list for relating to themes one, two, three and four. We went through with township staff already. And I made some revisions based on Brian's recommendations. And again, we will continue to evolve through our conversations, but more or less I see this document as kind of being our number one like to-do list, so to speak. So we've already done our, our full diagnostic review of the current plan and now we can kind of work on whittling what those amendments are going to be. So as I mentioned that, because I kind of see this headed toward a Word document process. What we could do moving forward is go section by section and I could hand you guys a redline copy for your packets of what the current text has and what we're proposing and, and so forth. So we'll kind of move through the logistics of how this will look. But the, the scope does have, I believe, a deliverable noted for every task. So the first of which, as noted, as previously said, this is, this is the deliverable for task one. And so forth. Any questions on this before I move forward to timeline, milestones, all that stuff? Yeah.
Another definition. Several areas are references four corners?
Yes.
Can someone tell me what those corners are?
So it's funny you say that because I was reading the plan and I was like, this isn't defined anywhere. I don't know what this is. So my boss actually was the one who was like, I think it means the area where Cascade, Gaines, Kentwood and thank you, Caldonia all meet. And that's the southeast, no, southwest portion of the township, right near the airport. Thank you. Calonia all meet. And that's the southeast, no, southwest portion of the township, right near the airport.
That is what it means, but I've never heard anyone actually say that.
The term has been used here a lot, maybe more so, um, prior to, to Brian sitting over there, but that term, the term came up, uh, frequently here.
Four corners.
The four corners, yeah. I think there was a push a while back to develop that area.
Yeah.
Previously, they extended, the township extended water and sewer in that area to try and spur development lax, started building out there some other entities and that, and that kind of, at that time when all that conversation was occurring, I think that's when that term was coined, so to speak. And then it's kind of been quiet in that area the last few years. There hasn't been as much push. So it hasn't been, the term is kind of been maybe lost to some of the newer people.
Number five.
Number five.
Uh.
Then page five or?
Study the feasibility, pros and cons of incorporation as a city.
Yeah, that was something that's already in your master plan. I pointed that out because I figured that would require more conversation through this process.
It is, yeah.
It was the first I had heard of tho- that hap- like conversation happening. If that's something that the township is interested, absolutely, you know, we can talk through that and, and what that might mean, but definitely, uh, a big, a big star went on that one when I saw it in the plan.
Yeah, I think we need to update our master plan to remove that.
Just solely that.
Why do we? Can we get educated? Like, I, I, what are the pros versus cons?
Some of the, real quick, hopefully, um, some of the pros are that you could have more control of the roads. Um, some of the pros are that you could theoretically begin to charge, um, like an income tax on people that work here, but don't live here. Um, Walker does that. Some other cities do that. And then, um, I mean, there are cons also, but there are pros and one of the, I think eventual pros, if someone were to go forward with this idea, there are cities on the east side of the state that are, you know, six by six former townships, where they actually make the whole township into a city rather than like what Lowell did, where there's a city, but still a township that ends up more complicated than if you just leave it just a township usually.
Brian, do we know why that was even included in the master?
I think that's been a discussion of previous boards and planning commissions. I think so. I don't, again, I, it hasn't come up in the last few years, but it was obviously a point of, um, you know, if someone wanted to look into it again, five years ago, when this was being done. Again, I haven't heard anything since I've really started here of any push in that, but I'm, I'm not sure I can look if that came up in a survey when this was done, or if that was the past leadership wanting to look into that more.
Yeah, it might've been a recommendation that the consultant at the time had and
It's probably because, because roads come up so often. That's probably one thing too, as well, if you want to control of your road, you incorporate.
Yeah.
It's the roads, the roads are, I was talking, I mean, not just for us. So as I'm sort of talking weird, weird outliers relating to roads, it also caught my eye. Update the vision for Thornapple River Drive, one-way street. What is that?
Yeah. The part of Thornapple Drive that is, uh, west of Cascade Road.
Between Cascade, between Cascade Road and Berger.
Yeah. Um, that was part of the creating a village feel.
Then you could have pedestrian pathway in that area.
Too narrow for the pathway.
I think, I mean, there were lots of things that people came up with, like maybe, uh, make old twenty eighth, you know, dead end at twenty eighth. There's a, a lot of people had all sorts of
No.
Just ideas, not necessarily like plans that were going to happen. Okay. But I think that was one of those that was thrown around as like, uh, traffic, walkability, traffic accident prevention, maybe.
So with these, like, former three thousand people that filled out our surveys, did any of them come up with the idea of being a city?
Not that I've heard.
Thank you.
Although we didn't specifically ask that question, I should say.
Nobody volunteered it.
No.
Thank you.
Um, so let's see, um, yeah, I think these are all, uh, the rest of the memo memorandum just kind of goes into a little bit more detail of our findings, um, through conversation with staff and, and our knowledge, our working knowledge of what previewed, yeah.
Page seven.
Mm hmm.
It says, update references to the Thornapple River Bridge. What is that?
The change.
Update references. Um, I believe the current plan has a whole, uh, vision for that, uh, pedestrian bridge and
Oh, it did. Had islands and trees and stuff, I think, in one variation.
Yeah. And so this will be just update that based on what you guys are already doing.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. So again, there are a couple of things here that are just completely, I shouldn't say completely updated, that are not relevant or outdated compared to what have, has occurred over the last two years.
Scott, we're on page four.
I, I'm sorry, I, I can't keep track. I lost. Yeah, apparently I, I went way far. I apologize.
No, you're fine. I, I wasn't already moving.
If our screens were working, maybe I could follow along there.
Um, so
Need to update the technology in this room. Maybe that should be on here.
Um, so moving for, uh, if, you know, continuing on page four at the bottom, um, again, just pointing out things here, um, uh, anti-discrimination policy, if the township's already done that, we can remove that as a, as a goal or an action. Um, just, you know, little things like that, kind of reworking to make things relevant. Um, the leverage the cluster of tech companies locating near four corners. So again, that's something that will talk through this process on, on what the future land use of that area looks like, um, in light of the work that you guys have already done, um, with respect to areas adjacent to the airport. So again, these are things that we pointed out that will require further discussion through this process. Um, again, the, uh, uh, central community or gathering space, that's pretty much already being done by the library per friendship park in this, um, upper village, lower village, I overarching idea that, uh, the, that area will likely be, you know, that central gathering place that, that, that folks pointed out that they wanted. Hmm. And now I'm at the top of page five, again, um, talking with, about with regard to utilities, looking at that, uh, defined, um, utility expansion area. Um, I forget exactly how the master plan words it. Um, but basically there's a line on the future land use map currently where the, the utility boundary is located. Um, so we'll reassess where that's going to go, um, through this process. Yeah, it's called the utility service area.
Can we attach goals to like real goals of when we want to see us try to, um, extend service in some of those areas? I don't know. It just seems like we've had this, this utility plan for years and years and years, but it's nothing's ever, that's right.
Mm hmm.
I mean, you, you know, there's a lot of people living in neighborhoods that if, if they had water running through them, but if they had just expanded it a little bit, wow, back, it wouldn't be as big of an issue now.
What's the current boundary? Is it Butrick or not even close?
Well, there's boundaries in all different areas for city water and city sewer. I think the map's online, actually. You can look it up at township website.
Maps further out from Butrick. It's on Cherry Lane.
So actually, if you go to cascade townshipvision.com, the website is, it has some of the best maps I've seen. It actually has sewer. Yeah. Water. It's got some really good, they seem high res than the ones on our own website.
So that utility service boundary goes out to Cherry Lane right now. And again, that's what Danielle said, we can take
We have different maps out there. Is that what you're telling me? It might be just the resolution which they're printed. One might be a scalable vector graphic. One might be a, a picture, but yeah, the ones on the Cascade Township Vision.
Usually Township Vision. Okay, I see.
Why is that separate from our usual web domain?
So that's a link to, that's what hosts the master plan. So that's where it is. So it's a link on our website. It takes you to the master plan.
Kind of fine.
Right. But I mean, like, so, um, if our website is cascade twp.com, why isn't this master plan underneath that URL? Why the vision where?
They need this whole own website. It can't just be a page in our own. I think just similar to the strategic plan, it kind of has its own, but that'll be the benefit, benefit of having a word doc, because we can have it just on our website as well. It'd be easier to host, but I don't think they could put it in our current website they created and so on to have all the different pages and links and things like that.
I, I don't know when this map that he just pointed me out to, the Cascade Vision website was created, but I know that the Sanituri sewer map on our website that was updated in March of twenty eleven, that hangs in the hall, the township offices right outside the conference room. That map stinks compared to this one. This one's in color. It's real easy to see everything. I mean, we certainly need to
It's just an historical rendering.
Is that, well, I guess what I'm saying is we should try to consolidate and reflect our, our, our websites to the, to, to one central map, not have
I would agree.
Advantage to this is you can
You can actually read it.
You can zoom way in. It's, 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 it's SDG.
I mean, this is, this is the one, uh, this is the one that So you just need to put the better maps on the township website is what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't know which one's more up to date though, because the problem is the nicer map doesn't show anywhere when it was last updated. It might in the tiny print in the bottom corner by Regis, but I can't quite read that without glasses.
Um, is this
Not that it matters. I'm just saying the one that I get the Cascade Vision website is much clearer.
Trying to find it.
Technologically, it answers you apparently. This is, this is why you're here, Steve.
Um, well, nonetheless, that is something that we will be, um, working on through this process. And that's something to note too, that that could even be an outcome of this process is to have a recommendation to centralize a lot of this data and information. So there aren't conflicting maps out there that show different things or, you know, making sure that everything is current, complete, up to date and within once and on one spot. Um, so definitely something that we can talk through, um, a bit more.
Yeah, it looks like the smash from twenty eighteen. So we should have our website use that instead of the one from twenty eleven.
Uh, bottom of page five, transportation and mobility, um, transportation management, um, actions one and two, uh, we will work on talking through those a bit, uh, in light of the DDA's decision to, uh, not renew the contract with the, um, with the rapid and, and what that might look like for master planning purposes. Um, park and ride lot near thirty sixth and one ninety six, uh, or I'm sorry, I ninety six interchange. Um, is that still relevant? Stuff like that. Um, you know, those are quick and easy changes. Um, fright and rail, which I'm now realizing that I, uh, mistakenly forgot to include a recommendation there. Um, but maintain truck cor- route corridors which support shipping needs of business and industry, something we should talk about through this process. If that's still in action that you guys want to, um, hone in on. Um, improving pedestrian and bike facilities on Bridge and Cascade Village, so forth. Um, again, this is a project that is already being implemented by the township board and, um, and DDA and, and other folks. So, um, again, just keeping things consistent. Um, future land use plan, um, we will be di- doing a bit of a deeper dive into several areas in specific of the, um, of the township. Um, well, of course the township wide as a whole, but, um, of course, kind of narrowing down or zeroing in on the Thornapple Plaza area, upper village, lower village. So again, that's the Tassel Park, um, Old Twenty Eighth, uh, area, um, Cascade Office Park, Centennial Park, again, the utility service boundary, what that might look like. Um, and I put in parentheses there, reduction to Butrick, because that was something that was brought up several times during the stra- the strategic plan process um, of, uh, narrowing down that utility service boundary area. But again, something we can talk about or will talk about, um, farmland preservation areas, um, are we, do we want to expand potential farmland preservation areas, um, what buffers, what does that look like? Um, four corners, again, as that pops up, um, what that future land use might look like in that area. Um, expanding on, um, definitions and future land use designation to provide more clarity. Um, so that with regard to density requirements, minimums and or maximums, um, so there isn't a twelve plus question mark, question mark, question mark, um, through this process, um, existing in planned characters. So, uh, visual examples of what building and site design currently looks like, what it could look like through zoning recommendations or enhancements or, um, and, and so forth. So having kind of like a highly visual, um, analysis of, of planned character in the area. Um, appropriate land uses for each future less land use designation, appropriate street design and infrastructure for each future land use designation. Cascade Village, I won't go through each of these bullets, but essentially making sure that everything that everybody's working on is all the same and all current and all complete. And making sure that all of the information is consistent across the board. Um, so of course that will revolve around, um, zoning recommendations, future land use recommendations, um, architectural review board will be involved in this process. The DDA is involved in this process, um, defining those concepts to align with, um, what was identified through the strategic plan process. So we're looking at definitive maps, going through the vision, um, details that are currently in the plan of those renderings that were done, figuring out which ones we want to keep, which ones might not be relevant any longer, um, and, and those types of things. Um, so any further questions before I move on? Yeah.
Um, I do think that for the number two, the freight and rail, one, you did mention that there's not listed a twenty twenty three recommendation, but I think um, it was hoped that there would be a recommendation by several people, um, specifically, I feel like, uh, there are like huge, heavy semi trucks that drive on several roads that maybe if it were reevaluated, it would redirect them maybe around certain areas.
Mm hmm. Yeah. If I'm not mistaken, Brian, was that the one that you pointed out to me to include in here?
Yeah.
Okay. That's probably why you said that and why I was like, oh, it's in there. And then realized I didn't write anything more about it. Okay, thank you.
Then I, another maybe naive question. So the utility service area boundary, I was looking at that earlier today. Some of this is all new to me, but I noticed that the boundary on the, um, uh, future land use map only runs from north to south on the eastern edge of the township, which kind of makes sense to me. So what we're basically saying, reducing it to Butrick. So the vision would be to have utilities, um, all the way to the north, all the way to the south, all the way to the west, but limit possibly to Butrick going east. Is that correct? Is that why? It's definitely why there's only one boundary.
Correct. And again, that's something that we can talk through further, but yeah, the idea is to at least move it a bit further west than it is now. Um, but if you guys don't want to touch it, and if you don't feel like it, that needs to happen, then that's okay too. Um, but that was just something that I recall, um, came up a few times during the strategic plan process was, um, basically all of that is rural residential farmland. We don't really want to touch that. Um, or have like neighborhood or suburban growth creeping past Butrick. So tighten that up a bit. Um, okay. So moving on to, I'll be quick. Um, I'll, moving on to the next tasks and timeline for all of this. So the next task, um, will be a next, uh, future land use plan that you guys will receive before you. So that will come up pretty quickly. Um, and we'll talk about scheduling in a minute, but basically, um, my goal is to present you guys with a new future land use plan and more detailed designations as per our diagnostic review points out, um, to kind of talk through what that, the new amended future me- land use plan may look like, what those definitions entail, um, and so forth. Um, then subsequently, which may, uh, occur at the same time is an updated zoning plan. So the zoning plan will be written, uh, um, as I mentioned, we'll go through and do a diagnostic review of your zoning ordinance. High level, of course, it's not going to be a huge deep dive because you're not doing a whole rewrite right now. Um, but high level, basically recommendations, so to, um, recommendations for your zoning ordinance to meet the goals of your master plan. So both of those, um, will work together. Um, so I kind of imagine that both of these might occur likely at the same time as one another. Um, task four, public open house. Um, so this will be basically toward the end, so to speak, of the process where we can invite public to come in. We'll have boards, we'll have activities, you know, whatever that might shake out to look like, um, to just Um, to just kind of get validation from the public that and let them know that we did hear them during the strategic plan process. We are listening and we. Are working to implement everything that the community has told us that um, they find uh, to be important to them. Um, you know, of course, within reason, but um. So it'll be in part to get public feedback from for the new draft, in part to validate the work that everyone's been working on. And then in part also to kind of spread the word that the township is um, uh, continuously working to be transparent through their planning processes. Um, meetings. So we are working on our had proposed um, four working meetings with township staff to discuss key updates and and upcoming tasks. Uh, for meetings with you folks, first of which is happening tonight. The next will be future land use map and zoning um, plan. The next after that will be the um. Full draft for discussion and review, and then after that will be distribution, potentially public comment period. And then two port board of trustee meetings, one of which for um, the update, let them know what's been going on, key points, and then the next would be for potentially adoption. So, having said all of that. This will be a quick timeline. Um, the goal is to have this done by the end of the year. Um, so this means that we'll be moving quickly, especially because um, there will likely have to be a sixty three day. Uh, public review period. Where basically by state law, you, if you're amending your master plan, um, especially substantial amendments that will likely come out of this process. That you will have to have your um, you will have to have a motion at the planning commission level and then the township board level to open up for a public comment. And basically, the project is kind of sitting in wait for sixty three days and then it can be adopted after that point. So, yeah.
I'd like to ask a question. If. We go through the public comment process. And this room is full of people and they make a comment about something specific in the plan that we want to change. And so after the comment period, we listen to the people and make a change. And. At that point, does the clock reset? Or is it, I mean, feasible that we could make that change and then the the board could approve the plan?
So the answer then is kind of twofold. The first of which that if you have substantial amount of edits that are drastically. Altering the content of the plan.
Well, if it's just something simple, like, for instance, I'm just throwing out a a hypothetical here. This is not. I'm not trying, you know, there was a a conversation a moment ago about a road potentially being uh, changed, like, let's say, one way. Instead of two way. Okay, so hypothetically, if we put in the plan that we want to look at the possibility of making that a. One-way road and all of a sudden the room is full of people that say they live on that road and they want nothing to do with that. Okay, and so we say, okay, we're going to change the plan to not not feature that any longer. Is that a significant edit or is that, okay, that's what?
No, that would likely not trigger uh, the next review process. So this is basically like if we come into a situation where. Or even township board says, whoa, 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 what's this going on that like? If the edits are substantial enough to where you're drastically changing the content and the character of your future land use plan. Then I would say, yes, you would likely need to do another comment review. That might be um, an attorney probably would have a better uh, grasp on that, but.
The reason I'm asking this is because the last time we did a master plan in this room, we had a lot of people. Come in and they had some concerns about the way the some of the the roads were laid out in the village. Ironically, a lot of stuff like. Roundabouts and things that were were taken out of this version and they didn't like that in there. And the planning commission was talking a little bit about, hey, wait a minute, maybe we should make some changes to this. And we were kind of told that, you know, well, you can try and change it, but. It's the this is what's going to happen, you know, and and so I I guess I wanted to have some understanding about, you know.
Yes, so changes like that would likely not trigger a whole new process. And it's also important to note, too, that like, you would not be, well. Traditionally, you would not be recommending adoption, the same meeting that you're having, like, that the public comment period is done. So what would happen is that you would hold the public comment period. You would open that up by motion and then you would have your public hearing after that comment period ha- happens. So. Essentially, there will be like a a leeway time to where you would, we would hear, have the pu- hold the public hearing. Then revisions will be made after that process, after that, and then we'll come back for a motion to adopt. So there will be like a meeting in between there, you know, to where like, we will have time to make substantial or to make those edits. Per what we heard from the public.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
So going back to the public. How many people filled out the surveys that wanted a communal railroad? Lansing to Grand Rapids.
I have not.
How many people said we want that?
I have not. I do not recall anyone.
I think that was in there.
Stuff get in.
That that was in there because, uh, do you know, Brian, the history on that? They, there was a a big deal. They were trying to find an area to put a. Uh, potentially have a a hub or whatever for pedestrians to get on and off the rail.
Who's name?
I've, that's what I'm trying to remember. It was, it was some entity. I don't know if it was the um, Department of Transportation or. It it was something that Steve, Steve had brought up. It was before you were here, but they they came in and they were, they identified the area at thirty sixth street and. Um, you know, on the backside of the airport as being a potential spot for a.
I, for Green State.
Okay.
But I I think I have some, uh, related to that. Great questions. If you look at the updated twenty twenty three future land use map, and I think it's updated because of what we've done last few meetings. It actually shows a rail station. At the intersection of Craft in thirty six.
Well, there you go.
Our most updated map shows a rail station.
How does it get in there?
That's a great, that's a great question.
The Rapid terminated the contract with Cascade Township, not Cascade Township terminated it with the Rapid, so that's backwards.
Well, that's what she said, though.
It would, it would not renew with us.
You got it right.
Now. The reason that got terminated is we didn't want to pay with the extra money for what, five people riding a bus? How in the world are we going to support hundreds of millions of dollars in train? I don't get it.
So those are all pre two thousand nineteen conversations that we can now revisit and see if that's a priority or not.
Based on nobody asking for it, I'm gonna say it doesn't take priority. All right, I'm done.
Well, those are all important things to note, though, that, you know. To make sure that everything is consistent with what everyone wants.
That's a great word, consistent. And so to that point. We were talking, you were talking a little bit a while ago about Thornapple Plaza. I believe it's supposed to be called Thornapple Center because that is consistent with what the zoning ordinance says. So we should try to refer to it as Thornapple Center because that's the title of its P U D.
I get it. Thank you for going now.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that was something that we kind of just dubbed during the strategic plan process and sort of ran with it.
Yep, no, it's easy to look up.
Unofficial.
As long as we're talking terminology. I was also looking at the future land use map earlier and now just now, we have an icon of our gateway. What what is gateway? Like, is it a major intersection? For a township boundary? Like, what what defines gateway?
So.
I think it's probably just a major road where they'd want to put a sign or identifying feature on it, let you know, oh, you're now entering Cascade or now you're entering the.
Location of a sign or something.
It's a place making tool.
Identify those as specific spots where they felt signs should be.
So this is probably where your signs used to be because there's gateways showing.
I don't see.
There's where your signs.
There we go. I must have been involved in that conversation eight or nine years ago.
You must have, right there, right there, right there.
Oh, no, they're missing one, missing one. Yeah, okay. Actually, I don't know why those dots are there. They're not where I was thinking.
Now that you mention it, I think I heard somebody else talk about those signs at one point, too.
Yeah, that came in front of the planning commission, I think, years ago, maybe a number of years ago about.
Okay.
Gate gateway points into the township where we wanted to have, you know, signs say like, welcome to Cascade. There are certain streets that you would identify as a higher traffic road than, say, other spots. Cascade Road, could put a sign on. Twenty eighth Street in snow, probably not.
Why is there one um, not at Patterson, but right next to the highway on twenty eighth?
It used to be on at Patterson, it probably got mowed down.
It's like not near the edge of our township. It just like it's, it's almost like a welcome to Cascade, like a mile in.
I have no comment.
So there is one existing there.
It's it's in a weird location. It's like.
Really new sign.
Um.
Big blue sign.
It's blue and it's like.
Yes, it was part of the jury in P U D. It, yeah, it, yeah, I'm sure there was some politics involved with that, but.
That was a Peterson deal.
Yep, they, they put that sign there as part of the.
I mean, the sign's fine. It's just why in that spot, but.
Because people get off the highway there and there, I I don't know if it was the township board, but there were people that felt that when you got off the highway there, you should know you're in Cascade. Even though you're almost out. Um, I, it was my understanding is that they wanted to identify that, you know. You got, you just got to die away and now you're in Cascade.
Mm-hmm. I've always, I've often wondered, like, you know.
Apparently, if you get off the other way and you're going towards the village, it doesn't matter.
You're supposed to.
You don't need to know.
Then you're supposed to know.
Um, so having said all of this, as I, as I mentioned, that we're going to be on on a um, pretty quick timeline here. So you'll probably see me quite a bit in the next couple of months. Um, and perhaps my colleague, Chris Corey, if you may remember him during the strategic plan process. Uh, so he's our zoning expert and him and I will work together um, on on the zoning recommendations for the plan. Um, so having said that, let's see, uh, looks like your December meeting, um, do you guys meet this first and third?
Mm-hmm.
First and third?
Yep.
Okay.
Generally.
Okay, well, Christmas might be an issue, but we'll work through that. Also, my. Process will be working with um, Brian to kind of pick what the potential dot adoption date will be and then work backwards from there and figure out basically what are the dates that we need to have. Like, that I will have my deliverables prepared for you. Um, so the tasks two and three, the future land use plan and the zoning plan will likely occur at your next meeting. I suppose, depending on how hefty your agenda is, and I'll work with Brian on that and what makes the most sense. Um, so just to note, too, that, you know, be, it may be a little bit like drinking out of a fire hose um, through this process, but hopefully it won't be. Hopefully, it's just, it's just more, you know, consistency, cleanup work, scrubbing. And then we can, you know, talk about the exciting visionary stuff um, through the process. So. Any questions on on any of anything?
That was a great presentation, Jamie.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for entertaining all of our strange questions.
Oh, no, I uh, I understand. Well, especially if you're not involved in the process, then you're kind of playing catch up.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you took notes on our comments because I feel like they actually are going to be incorporated.
She was just doing like.
I know, no, I mean, that character of you.
This guy is a total.
Get rid of him, make recommendation not to reappoint him.
I would say if you guys are looking through either her memo again, or just the master plan and have questions or thoughts, oh, why don't we do this? Just shoot me an email at any time and I work with Danielle, make sure we. Get that into before the next update. So just let me know.
Thanks, Daniel.
Yep, thank you, guys. We'll talk soon.
Next article, uh, nine, in the old business. Moving on. Article ten, any other business? Michigan Association of Planning Annual Conference?
Yeah, so I put this in there. So again, just putting out kind of educational or training opportunities. So this is, there's the Michigan Association of Planning Conference, which. Planning professionals are a part of. So Madison and myself and Danielle and McKenna staff are a part of that. So they do an annual conference. Um, again, that a lot of professional planners attend, and I think in the past, a few members of you might have attended that conference as well, but. Um, Mr. Bruno had met, reached out and asked about it, but if there's anyone that's interested in attending, it's up in Traverse City this year. In the first week of October. So if you want to take a look at the agenda and uh. See, so MAP, Michigan Association of Plan, that's the same group that did those kind of spring workshops as well. So this is their annual conference then. So if that. Seems interesting to anyone, um, reach out to me, let me know, and we can look into attending that. And then again, they'll have more workshops available. Uh, in the spring of twenty twenty four, so I'll share those when those come up as well. But this one's a little more in depth and again, it's kind of reared toward the professional planners, but if anyone's interested, um. You know, you're welcome to reach out and ask questions or look into attending that if you'd like.
Cascade Township pays for the attendance?
Yep, so we have, yeah, we have an education line item then, and we have some funds in there again for staff to attend, and then if any commissioners might be interested.
Okay, great. Uh, rescheduling November sixth meeting?
So yeah, the Clerks Department informed me that there will be an election the day after that. I think it's a school. Board one came up or that one that they weren't aware of previously. They told me because they, I ask them at the beginning of every year. Um, but so just, just, that's a little ways out, but just so you know, we'll move that meeting. I'm thinking the week before, actually, since there's three weeks until the previous one. So that one might get moved to October thirty. So. I don't know if you put them in your calendar this early or not, but just a early heads up on that. I I'll check with Chris, but that's what I was thinking is move that one up a week. Those are the only two that I had for other business.
Any other business?
I do, um. Notice uh, something that we talked about earlier about the Cascade Township Vision dot com website. Um, I'm not sure like why URLs bother me so much, but I'm not sure who owns this one. Or even who is in charge of like, keeping hours updated and going. I noticed that Cascade T W P dot com is a mirror of Cascade. T W P dot org, which I like, but I feel like. Does our township own Cascade Township Vision dot com? And if so, I feel like everything on that could be moved to. I'm not sure Cascade Township dot com slash vision or whatever you want to do, but it seems like a totally separate website. That I would have looked at and thought, this is nuts and not even looked at it, had you not pointed it out.
It was, it was set that way intentionally because that was our working master plan back the last go around, right, Brian?
And right, so I think, I think the consultant at the time, twenty nineteen plan helped set that up. So we can look at the feasibility of, like you said, kind of changing.
But so is this supposed to be for the public consumption or is this?
Yeah, so, no, so it's similar. The strategic plan is the exact same thing. Where you click on it, it brings you to a separate page with the plan and information on it and attachments. So the strategic plan kind of has the same setup as well. And so, right, there's a link. We paid a lot of money for it.
Okay, I, whoever is in charge of our websites, I request that they take a look at that and just incorporate it into the. The usual websites that we have, because I feel like. You know, anyone looking up Cascade Township stuff online is going to look at that URL and think. That's not our official website and they're not going to go to that. I wouldn't have.
Well, I don't even know if we have, I mean, do we have control over editing that? Because.
We should. Now, we haven't had to in the past, so we haven't used, well, we shouldn't be able to. So a link from our website, we have a link on it in the planning department one, but yeah, we can look at if there's better ways to do that.
I feel like the link from our website might not actually send you to that. Like, it might just be like a dead link at this point.
It should still, I I've used it recently. It should still be working.
In any event, thank you for listening to that.
Okay, uh, the other thing I want to mention is the Farmland Preservation Subcommittee of the Planning Commission did meet last Thursday morning. And we're going to meet again in two weeks.
Well, I think it's like more like a week and a half now, right?
I did type up the notes. I sent a copy to Scott and to Brian for their review. And once you get back to me with your comments, I'll update that. Any other business? Uh, Article eleven, acknowledge visitors, those wishing to speak, anybody online? Okay, I have a motion to adjourn.
So.
Support. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it is eight thirty.